Mr. Patterson, would you leave us any indication please, sir?
Certainly. Let's have everybody please stand. Dear gracious heavenly Father, we come to you again this time just asking your blessings on this meeting. You blessed Fannin County abundantly this year, and we want to thank you for that right now, Lord. We need to be a thankful people and not forget all that you've done for us. So we ask that you go with us now. Bless each and everyone here tonight. Help our words be pleasing in you. And help us to have wisdom, Lord, and make the right decisions that we can have Fannin County be a prosperous place and one again is pleasing in your sight. Thank you again for all these blessings we have in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Georgia pleads with praise. Praise be to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of rights, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, in our new business, we have the approval of the minutes of the November the eighteenth, regular scheduled meeting. Commissioner Patterson, any air or motion in those minutes?
No, Chairman, I haven't had it just yet. Thank you.
Commissioner Searson?
No, sir.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve those minutes and I'll ask for a second.
A second?
All in favor? Gentlemen, before heading to new business, I have a request to amend the agenda. And we will put this as number seven. And if you guys will remember, this has to do with animal control and documentation, which we, I believe we spoke about that last of October.
October fourteenth.
And this, we finally got the lease for the property in which to do that work for us. I would like to put that as number seven and move our last regular scheduled board meeting down to number eight. And there's no discussion of that. I will make a motion to do just that and ask for a second.
A second?
All in favor? Thank you so much. All right, so number one, under new business, we have a board discussion action. This is a variance request from the Smiley Family Trust to build a garage with one corner nineteen feet from the edge of Coldwater Creek and another corner will be thirty-one feet from the edge. Is there anybody here that is for this variance request? Anybody here that opposes? All right. Sir, you would like to come up and tell us about your opposition? I'd like to hear.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Cliff Lancy. I'm employed at Intellijet. But I represent the River on the Toccoa Propagated Association, which is where this lot is located. And they've asked me basically to speak out positions. What we're looking at is, you know, we respect the Smilys. I mean, when you're in an owners' association, you know, your dilemma always is you want to enforce the rules, but they're your neighbors and you're going to be around them for years to come. So you want to be respectful of what they're trying to do. Our problem here is that if you've ever been out to River Walk, we call it, it's a very secluded wooded subdivision on the Toccoa River. It's a very pretty place. We actually have protective covenants that place the setbacks at fifty feet from the edge of the road. And in this, there are several phases, but the phase we're talking about here is phase five. And all the covenants are basically the same, but they establish fifty-foot setbacks from the edge of the road. I think your setbacks are fifty feet from the center line, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
The, what they're, in their, in their application, I was looking at the drawing that they put in there. And I agree that it shows it's nineteen feet from the, from the edge of the road, which is basically from here, the corner. Our setbacks again are fifty feet. We, River Walk is a fairly older subdivision. I think it's probably close to twenty years old. And there are a number of houses in there. And all of those people were built and complied with this rule, kept their houses fifty feet from the edge of that road. This, this particular structure is much closer. I mean, I'm from Billman County and I'm a real estate lawyer down there. And, you know, we deal with the same things you all deal with. And many times when you're seeing these kinds of variance requests, there's a couple of feet because there's really a hardship. I mean, they're, for one reason or another, they need a couple of feet. When I looked at this, keep in mind that, that on their plat, Coldwater Creek is sort of divided into two categories. There's eighteen feet for the road itself. The road itself is eighteen feet wide, but the right-of-way, it's actually forty. Pretty common. If you go to the surface area, it's usually much narrower than the actual right-of-way itself. When I looked at their drawing, I couldn't tell which was which. I'm guessing here that when they show nineteen feet, they're actually showing nineteen feet from the edge of the road.
More than this drawing is parade.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, it's, what I'm saying is that it looks like, they're actually asking, I mean, when I do my, it's kind of sort of like math in my head. What I'm seeing is that the structure is nineteen feet from a point that's actually nine feet from the center line of the road. Now, there's no plat attached to this application. So, you know, one of my concerns is I can't really tell from their application how far from the center line they actually are. Are they, are they measuring it from the edge? Is the nineteen feet from the edge of the road?
Nineteen feet is from the edge of the road.
It's from the edge of the road. Okay, so the road is surface, not the forty-foot right-of-way, actually from the eighteen feet. That's what I'm thinking. So, I mean, you know, as I say, I do a lot of real estate work. And many times you don't even know where the right-of-way is because they don't, the survey is only marked right-of-way. You're just trying to see where the road is. So in any event, what I'm looking at, it looks like they're asking the commission to vary this by like twenty-two feet. And I like to kind of run you through kind of the arithmetic that I'm doing there. But if they're nineteen feet from ninety feet from the center line, if you take that fifty feet from the center line, they're asking, they're asking the commission to vary this by like twenty-two feet.
Well, now, must be in a row.
Sure, sure.
We would have to find that exactly. Is a fifty-foot setback from that particular road? Because I know we have, there are right-of-ways that the county owns and they vary it all across the county. So what we would end up having to do is find out exactly what the right-of-way is on this particular road. And I understand you, you know, most are fifty-foot setbacks.
Sure.
But in a private subdivision, there are some that are, that don't meet that same requirement just because of the land, the property that's there.
Sure.
So, you know, there are places in the county where it's actually a hundred feet.
Sure.
You know, and then there's places where it's thirty feet. So it just depends on, on the road itself. So in my mind, and I, I understand what you're saying, you know. Another thing, it's not for, it's not for Fannin County to enforce or not enforce. POAs or HOAs.
Sure.
That's not what we do.
Sure.
So my thought on this, when, when I first got your email, I said Pete Nixon would look at this place. There is a, there is an option there to move it ten feet farther back. You see what I'm saying? So I think that corner, instead of nineteen feet, would end up twenty-nine feet. And again, I'm not sure what your POAs, HOAs, I'm not sure what that entails. I don't have a copy of that to look into that. But there is, there is a solution there in a sense. So then it becomes forty-one feet from the other corner makes it forty-one feet, but the closest corner being twenty-nine feet. So my thought on that is this. And if I understood you right, there's, there's no other house in that subdivision that you're aware of that has asked for any kind of variance request. They've all been true to what your POA or HOA has, is it POA?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's POA.
What, what part of POA has that? So to what the POA rules are, are you familiar if there's ever been a variance request?
I don't know. And I'll tell you this, the, my familiar, I'm sort of familiar with the subdivision. I've been out there a couple of times. There's been, there's been a lawsuit that I was sort of peripherally involved in. So I've been out there. I have not asserted and don't profess to know, but I know that when I've talked to my client about it, they're very concerned because their impression is that all the houses were set back. I mean, if you drive through, it's very rural wooded. The houses are set back. If this helps, the covenants say fifty feet from the edge of the road. Now, I, now, there is an issue there because I don't know either whether edge of the road means the actual edge of the eighteen feet that you see in the phase five. The plat actually says roads in this place are eighteen feet road, forty-foot right-of-way. I'm not sure I know when it says in the covenants, fifty feet from the edge of the road, it means edge of the right-of-way or edge of the street.
I would think it would be the edge of the road if it says.
Well, that's what I, I would think that too. I mean, usually if it's right-of-way, it'll actually say the right-of-way. That's my expectation. But I don't, but I don't make a sure, and I can't tell you if, that there has ever been a request for a variance for the grant for building. I mean, I just don't know.
Boy, and here's the other thing, even for me, and I can't speak for the other commissioners. I'm obviously better listening and they'll make up their own mind. For me myself, since you brought this to our attention, I would love myself to, to look at this a little bit more and see actually what the right-of-way is there.
Sure, sure.
I would also like to research to see if there has been any other variance request given in that subdivision.
Recent.
Also, you know, if it's, let's just say it is approved, okay? That's just saying that the county would allow that to happen. That's not saying that there wouldn't be fallout at any of that timing out. I kind of, I'm not saying, I just hate that there's nobody here to kind of talk this out that was for that. You see what I'm saying? So my, my initial thought is, is that my suggestion would be, and you guys can discuss it if you like, would be to table this till our next regular meeting. And that would be for us to look more into this, to see if there actually has been instances where there's been a variance request in the subdivision and actually what, what the actual right-of-way is in that area.
I agree with you, but may I make a couple of more points?
Please do.
The, one of the things that, that we fear out there is that if the county grants it, and it is, for example, the only time there's been a request granted, it sets a precedent. I mean, years ago, I actually represented Billman County for a couple of years. And, you know, what we were always afraid of is that if we bend that rule, how do we bend it back? And what happens when the next guy comes in and says, "I want variance." And you say, "Well, we're inclined not to give you the variance," and he points at this one and says, "Well, you've already done it for them. Why can't you do it for us?" I'm sure you all have seen that. I mean, that's.
We have.
That's one thing to work on. And we had that same concern with us. I mean, our concern is that if the county granted it, the Smilys are going to come to us and say, "Well, if the county did it, why won't you do it?"
Again, that's not for us to enforce.
Well, I agree, I agree that this, I'm just, I, I, I know that you folks will do it by your best judgment. And all I'm saying is here's, here's how we see it. I just want you to have the benefit of how, in the subdivision, how we look at it. And our concern is, we just, we think that those rules should be minded unless there's really a good reason not to do that. And we're concerned that we just feel like we need to keep those covenants as intact as we can. And if the county grants it, and in the county, as I said, the county will do what it wants to do. And we're not trying to, at all, because it dictates the county. It'll put us in a position where when we tell them, you know, what's going to happen to us? Are they going to sue us? Are they going to challenge us? Are they just going to ignore us? We just don't know.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So these people, when they went in there and they bought this lot, didn't they get the rules of how it was running this subdivision?
I mean, I would suspect they did. I've had it happen in my practice where people will say, you know, "We didn't see the covenants." Well, here's part of the chain of. I mean, I don't know if they actually have the system or if I can deliver it to them. But when we do closings, if someone says to me, you know, "What are the covenants in Kusawatki River Resort?" I'll say, "I'll give you a copy if you'd like." But very rarely does it happen. Most of the time people are aware. Certainly if someone's going to go and spend $200,000 on a house, they want to know what the covenants are. I would think.
One, one other question, not being ready, but when, when you seen this coming out, I mean, obviously you sent this a few days ago, you know, for us to look at. Did you reach out to anyone with this, with these folks just to say, "Hey, we do have POAs and HOAs?"
I did not. I did not. I mean, I only had this for a couple of days. And I hope point out also this kind of embarrassing, my letter to you resides lot sixty-five, lot ninety-five. It ain't lot ninety-five. It's lot eighty-one. And I only realized that Ms. Candace, I guess who works for you, sent me the application yesterday. And I looked at this thing, I looked at that drawing and turned it this way and that way. And I just couldn't make sense of it and realized there's something I've got to go and watch. So it's eighty, so when you look at my letter, keep in mind that it's really not lot ninety-five. It's actually lot eighty-one if we're talking about the question. Mr. Chairman, I understand your points completely and, you know, whatever you do is certainly fine with us. I just want the board to understand what our position is. That's all. For whatever benefit that, that gives you in making the decision, we just want you to know how we feel about it. And we would, we would be grateful if you only would be able to.
Okay. Once again, and again, I'm not, you know, speaking for either commissioner, that could be my situation, what I, what I talked about earlier. So gentlemen, if you have discussion on that, or will we?
It ain't that. It's just understanding it. I mean.
Let's have a listen and talk.
Well, no, man, I mean, they bought this lot. And so according to this here with the road and everything is, and here's the cul-de-sac, are they building some kind of monster house on this lot or something?
It's live in the Toccoa, actually.
So it's a garage you're adding on to the house? And so these people know the covenants already then?
That, that would be my assumption. I would think that they probably have a duty to make sure they understand.
Well, I mean, hell, I mean, if you go to a closing, that's why, I mean, you pay these big old fees. And I mean, if I go buy something, man, I mean, I know what I can do and what I can't do. You know what I'm saying? I mean, so it's, it's, I mean.
Mr. Searson, that's how you work out it, that everybody else there pays the bills. Let's keep the bills the way they are unless there's really something going on there.
And I understand that, what you just said about, well, if you bend the rule, have you bent it back?
Yeah. That's, that's all, that's, that's our concern. Our concern with our doing. I mean, we don't really take any joy in making the Smilys lives difficult. We'd like them to do whatever they want to do. But everybody in that subdivision, as far as I know, has nice houses and they observe the setbacks. And they don't want a subdivision where the window is that far away from the road. You know, that's really, that's really about the aesthetic of the subdivision. Nineteen feet is really close to the road.
Let me ask you, if you talk to the Smilys about this, are they aware of your concern?
I don't know. I haven't spoken to them. I've got this assignment from my client, probably.
But who is your client?
My client is called the River Walk on the Toccoa Propagated Association. Yeah, they brought this to me just a few days ago. I'm really new to it too.
Is there a chairperson on that?
What's that?
Is there a chairperson on that that you're aware of?
The guy that I deal with is Mike Davis, and I believe he's the president of this.
Well, hasn't he run up and talked to these people?
I don't know if Mike's spoken to them or not. I'll tell you this, Mike revered the night his mother passed on. And he's in Atlanta right now, dealing with the funeral, Rachel. He would be here. But he's, as I understand it, he's the president of it. I honestly don't know who the board, I've never met the board. I've been in the industry several years and he called me and said, "We've got this coming up on Tuesday. Can you be there?" And I said, "I'd rather not. I'd rather not be there. I don't really know enough about it." And he said, "We don't have anybody else." So I said, "I've known him three years." I said, "Look, if you need me to be there, I'll be there." So that's, so in terms of the details, there are probably some details you can ask me about that I'm probably not going to know. But if anything you need to know, I'm happy to look at it and get you the information if you'd like.
Anything else?
I think that needs to be taken so we can get some more information on it.
All right, so, and had said I will make a motion to table this till our next regular meeting to give us an opportunity to do a little, do a little homework on it ourselves. So I'll make that motion. Ask for a second.
A second?
All in favor? Thank you, sir.
I appreciate you letting me speak, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, so number two is this is the adoption of official year 2026 Fannin County budget. Does anybody want me to read this fourteen-page resolution?
Yeah.
So we had some public hearings, obviously, people come. We had a couple of the questions from people who've contacted us, so forth, so on, prior to that. But, or during that, prior to this meeting. So basically, we're trying to pass the budget, that's the bottom line. Any discussion on this, gentlemen?
No, we just didn't want to say it.
We very much have, more than we deserve.
I have made.
I have made, Mr. Chairman.
All right, I'll make a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2026 Fannin County budget and I'll ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Oh, thank you. I can't swim, buddy. Sir, try to give me a girlie glass and I'll say, "There it goes."
All right, so number three, we have our Fannin County Director, Ed O'Neill regarding the MOU for the boost grant. How are you today?
Good, thank you. Actually, got a couple of things. First is a purchase and then the next is a couple of grants that we received. We briefly discussed the damage at Tamlin Park. I do have a quote for security cameras there that will cover the restaurants, the parking lot, and the new football courts that are out there. And it would be sixty-seven, thirty-one, and thirty-seven pennies from Blue Ridge Surveillance.
Give me that number again.
Six thousand, seven, thirty-one, thirty-seven. And that should give us visibility over the whole thing and even inside the courts, so.
Well, I think the damage that had been made out there, I mean, would you, you had movement, to be honest with you.
Yeah, that's the only way we can stop it, is to see what has happened.
Gentlemen, I think before we proceed to the next one, do you have any discussion on this for security team?
No, sir.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve sixty-seven, thirty-one, thirty-seven, the Booker Surveillance over those security cameras and I'll ask for a second.
Does that come in as flaws?
It'll come in as flaws, I'm sorry.
Second?
All in favor?
And then next, we've received two grants. One of the grant, the first grant is not contractual. We received a $40,000 Cal Ripken grant as for our after-school program. It's provided not in cash, but in equipment, computer tablets, chairs, tables, learning devices, all, all kinds of really cool stuff for the kids. Jade Graham applied for that. It's already been delivered. And that one is for $40,000. We also applied for and were awarded the boost grant again this year for after-school and our summer program. It's a $45,000 grant in cash. It can be used for supplies. It can also be used and probably be mainly used for payroll. So it's a state-funded grant that Georgia Parks and Recreation manages that grant. And they award the grant and they cut the check. So all I need from you is approval for a MOU that we will manage it properly and a signature from the chairman. And it will go into effect tomorrow morning. We will apply for the purchase.
Gentlemen, any discussion on the boost grant, MOU?
No, I haven't had.
I'll make a motion to accept the MOU for the boost grant and I will ask for a second.
A second?
All in favor?
Yes, I see my copies, yes.
Thank you. All right, so number four, we have our Land District Director, Ed Hawkins, running first, sit on the plate.
I'm here to see if we can get a mini excavator purchase. I had found one from a man. And I got him down a thousand-dollar dollar. He agreed to take nine thousand dollars with the lights off. And it's got twenty-one hours on it. It's a useful. It's got diesel, motor motor on it. And it would come in handy for us in a lot of ways.
Tell us how.
Digging up water lines, busted water lines, removing sidewalks. And, you know, I know we don't do a lot of sidewalks, but occasionally we need it. And, you know, it's not a big machine. It will get into tight places. But outside of that, you know, it's limited in what it can do. But it would come in handy for us.
How much did he sell?
Nine thousand dollars, right? It's got twenty-one hours. It's like brand new and it comes with two buckets. Here's one extra bucket with a little mower attached to it. Which, we use that? Probably not, but it comes with it. So. I've got a general fund budget for ten thousand per quid. I've got that in the budget. And, you know, we've set aside some money for bigger excavators. But until we need it, a bigger one, and, you know, it might come to the point, well, we will one day. But, you know, we just have to take on some bigger jobs, you know, or use it, you know.
You got the trailer for that?
No, we've got a trailer that will holler hit on some with a trailer.
Okay.
But it does come with extra bucket. And that's roughly probably, I'm assuming, three to five hundred dollars. I don't own the bucket. And the little attachments that they've got with it, the molar attachments, probably fifteen to two thousand dollars.
How much does that run?
The naked machine by itself, and I don't know if that includes one bucket or not, is, I looked it up. It's like fifteen-five.
Only twenty-one hours on it?
It's got twenty-one hours on it.
Put that to work tomorrow?
We need to. I hope not, but if we need one, I hope we don't have a lot of water leaks to dig up. Lots of times like the correct order or something, they have several leaks sometimes. And we have to go down with a shovel and a pick or you can't get a big machine to them or something. You know, it would be handy for the whole county anyways. It's got a hydraulic thumb that's a plus, that's an extra. Twenty-five hundred dollars to five thousand on the bigger machine. But the smaller ones I can't take, but the bigger ones I do. I know it's twenty-five, five thousand on the bigger.
Gentlemen, any discussion on this?
No, sir.
I have none.
I'll make a motion to purchase this. I'll make a motion to purchase this, uh, a mini excavator for nine thousand dollars, and I'll ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Alright, number five, we have our Fannin County Sheriff, Dean Curtin, uh, regarding purchases on quick, or, if that's somebody there.
I'm, I'm sure.
Dave, you changed a little bit.
I'll introduce him if I need to, just to turn, that's about it.
Good night, I'll be speaking to you as the team commander for the Fannin County Sheriff's Office Entry Arrest Team. Which is our proper name for the generic SWAT team, okay? Just to let you know a little bit while we're here, I need to tell you what we do and who we are. A lot of people don't realize since two thousand eleven, we've actually had a tactical team here at the sheriff's office to respond to higher-risk incidents, uh, within the county, and we've actually helped our neighbors a few times. Um, for the most part, vast majority of every bit of our equipment has come from, from three sources. Asset forfeiture, the excess property ten thirty-three program through, through the army and through the federal government, um, and through donations. That's where we've donated probably eighty-five to ninety percent of our equipment. Currently, the team stands with, uh, with, with several elements, we have an entry element, those that are on perimeter and then move on in to the, to the structure closer to the person, it's an outdoor movement, uh, we have, we have medics, uh, we have negotiators, and then we have our sniper observers. That's, that's the heart of, of what our team does and how we function as a whole. And we've come along pretty good, and we bought a little bit of equipment as we go through asset forfeiture, someone makes a donation. I was looking for equipment one day, and this random stranger walks down in front of the jail and says, I have this backpack with forceful entry tools, would y'all like it? We don't know who he is, but that's, that's how we've got most of our stuff. As we purchase items, we try to purchase something that later on will be compatible with the next step of adding on would be. But if you wait three or four years to get more seizure money, guess what? So that last three or four years' equipment is not compatible with what you have. The last couple of years, we've had several high-risk situations that we've been involved with, that were a little bit, little bit more at risk than, than what we're used to. But it's, it's our job to safely resolve those high-risk situations. And it's not magic, SWAT is not magic, it's a combination of two things, training and equipment. And especially the latter part of this year and most of our recent memories, I need some equipment. I really do, and I'm not asking for something that I won't, I'm not asking for something that would be nice to have, or I wouldn't be here. You can ask the sheriff, I don't like asking him for money, I don't like asking him for anything, and I sure don't like having to ask y'all for it. We have identified several, several deficiencies in our current equipment. I call it the table, our table of equipment for our operations. I won't bore you with all of, with all of the, hey, we don't like this equipment because of, or we have tried three different sets of communication gear that just fizzled out, it wasn't tough enough because we went a cheaper route. What I'm gonna do is, is just tell you what we're looking for, uh, those general items that, that we need. I'm gonna tell you why we need them, if you have questions, ask them, ask as, as you, as we go, or, but, I mean, you're the board or, or when I, whenever. Um, number one, need to update our body armor. Our current body armor, um, it's good armor as far as protection, where it protects. But right now, the body armor basically gives us a center mass in the front and center mass in the rear protection. It doesn't do anything for, for our sides, it has three A armor, which protects from pistols. If you take your vest out of your carrier that you're, that you're working out of today, if you remove that vest and take the time to step it into your tactical carrier that will accept your plate, then you have more armor. Also, those plates are ceramic and they're old, and they're absolutely awesome to take in around, but you can drop them on a hard floor and they're ten, and they tend to break. Same kind of plates I had when I was in the US Army in the early two thousands. The armor that we're looking for, that individual equipment, is a, is one of the newest vests on the market. And when I say vest, it's a tactical carrier, and everywhere you see cloth, it's a, it has three A protection, it protects you from pistols. The plates that go in that are level three plates that will protect us from most rifle fire. Not fifty cows or three thirty-eights or something crazy, but most common calibers that we encounter on our missions and what we would find at our neighbors' houses if we, if we, you know, hanging out with them this afternoon.
Are those steel plates or those ceramic plates?
Uh, those are neither, those are, uh, neither, they're absolutely neither, they're whatever their Kevlar blend is. They're very small and very thin. We worked the last operation in McHaisel, and I'm sure where we got shot. Depending on when we got there, but from fifteen to twenty-hour operation, those super old huge vests that we had will make, the young guys were complaining about their feet and their hips hurting. These new vests are half of the weight, even with the same equipment on them. You can move, you can be agile, uh, you have better ingress and egress when you're in tight spaces, execute the search warrants, getting on your knees, the handcuffed guys, and, and stuff like that. Um, so, yep, it's, it surely is, it's pretty new, and it's some of the super best on the market, but they brought, representative brought it down, and it's absolutely so light, so agile, and so protective, it's, it's just hard to, to say no to them.
So how many of those are you talking about?
So, full strength as far as the tactical side, we like to run fourteen people. We're not at fourteen right now, we're a couple short, but we're looking for fourteen. And that also includes, our armor package includes our two medics. Because our medics do get into the warm zone sometimes, so they need the same protection as, as we have. We're also asking for some communicate, communication headsets, alright? The ones that we're asking for are called the liberators, there's a model, there's a liberator four and a liberator five. The fours would be pressed out to people on the team, and if you're a team leader or a team commander, you have the liberator fives. The fives cost a little bit more than the fours because they run dual comms. And what that allows me to do is to speak back to everyone who's in command and never miss a beat on the other channel with, with the guys that are on the ground with me. Uh, they also, uh, are ear protection. So whether we're on the range, just having a range day, or we have to do a diversionary device on scene, or just to keep out the chatter of the traffic going up and down the road, or, you know, people talking or whatever it is. With the headset, that allows me to focus on the conversation I need to focus on. When we're standing in, in the middle of the road outside of Blue Ridge here just last month, people were stopping, and it seems like, and I was trying to be on the radio and listen to what was going on, and I swear, every time they stopped, it was a diesel truck. And now I'm having to go like this with my radio and say, that's good, you're telling people what's going on, but I can't hear it. So they, they, they serve more than one purpose, uh, just to talk to each other. With that armor package, we're asking for the, uh, for the boost pro helmet, it's also a subsidiary product of Safari Land. It's the latest and greatest three A protection helmet that there is on the market, alright? Even though there's other helmets that are rated three A, and when I say three A, that's pistol protection, y'all with me? Uh, Johnny knows, 'cause he's done this for years. As far as, uh, the three A protection, as it's rated, Safari Land, this particular helmet is also, they do their own ratings, and that's how far that the Kevlar in that helmet will actually penetrate, even though it's stopped in the bullet, how far will that Kevlar come toward my, or one of my teammates' heads? There's, and these are the best, they have the lowest, the lowest of all. Um, and of course, those helmets are gonna, are gonna support the com gear that we're buying. We don't have to worry about something not fitting, not working, they'll come pre-made for those liberator headsets. Now, they'll also support other devices such as flashlights and items, et cetera. Uh, the other, uh, big chunk of what we're asking for tonight, and the price I'm gonna whip you, scared to give it to you, Coach, uh, is the optics package, alright? And when I say optics, I won't bore you with all the details and model numbers like my guys know. Um, but what we're looking at is scopes, sights, and magnifiers. Most of what we have now, uh, was asset forfeiture. But everything we have now, except for just maybe a couple of the sniper scopes, it's for daytime or flashlight use. Alright, it's for daytime or flashlight use. Uh, we currently don't have magnifiers if you're on entry team, so if you're, if you're seventy-five yards and up, you can make a pretty comfortable shot, but not the kind of shot that someone on SWAT should be trying to make. So we need magnifiers to go along with the sights. We need scopes, uh, that are night vision compatible, uh, that can light up, that they can use during, during those low light and nighttime hours. It just, it stands our operational hours and our capability in the darkness. Um, related to those optics is what I'm giving you tonight and what I'm asking, gentlemen, also includes night vision. If you're, there's a lot of people I see at night when we're out on patrol, they say I don't patrol, but I can't sleep at night, so I do it around the house. Anyone that hunts hogs and, and coyotes, they've got good night vision or thermal ability. A lot of the citizens out in the public do, it's, it's commonplace, and we don't have any. We had a couple sets that were twenty-something year old that I used when I was at the task force, uh, a couple decades ago. Um, those, of course, those, those are long and gone. Uh, the night vision that we're asking for has a ten-year warranty. We're, we have actually reached out to vendors and we're trying to get the best we can for the money that we get, and also something that's gonna be backed up as far as service, and if something goes, if something goes wrong. Hey, night vision, it's simple, a built-in seeing low light or seeing the night, whether that's out in the woods looking for a guy. Uh, earlier this year, one of our first high-risk callouts was a gentleman who had committed an aggravated assault on one side of the road in Morganton. Goes across the road and commits carjacking. Um, the drone could see him because the drone had that capability, and the drone operator, well, he was, you know, he, he found this guy. My training's always been as commander, if you have to chase somebody in the dark with a flashlight, and you don't have some other resource, you don't do it. Now, that situation resolved with some help from the community, we got that suspect in custody not much longer after that. But we can't go to folks with a flashlight saying, here I come, it's, it's just common sense. We don't wanna silhouette ourselves as we, as we approach those targets. There's some other miscellaneous items in what we're requesting in that money, and basically what those items are, are just, are just uniforms. And then, as we swap vests, our belts and holsters and, and everything that complements that particular vest. Be glad to answer any questions, we have already applied for one grant that will pay up to next year, we're hoping eight thousand dollars to reimburse for some of those armor expenses. We're gonna continue looking for grants as they come open this year, we have some people, we have opened some doors with that we hope, we hope will pay off for us. That's three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. And that's what we're asking for, three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
That is the, that is the price of what it takes more days to keep your community safe in the world we live in. So, you know, uh, that's a lot of money, I mean, but, you know, that's why, uh, when we've been blessed to have that, and, uh, and I know what you're saying, I've had conversations with the sheriff before, uh, when we were talking about resources. Resources is out there, I want people to understand this, and we talked about that. Resources are out there if we need it to call people to come in and help us and assist us, that has these capabilities in this type of equipment, but the problem that you got right there and counting on those resources is time.
Yes, sir, so let's say the Cherokee County Sheriff's Office in Georgia was gonna be our backup team tonight, or if we need them.
You're looking about two hours.
They were all leaving supper together right now or having a training mission. It's gonna be at least an hour and a half before they have boots on ground and can start making any type of decisions. An hour and a half is a long time here in a dynamic tactical situation.
And then, you gotta ask yourself, what's a life worth? A life's worth a lot more than that.
I have to stand at command, I go forth, and I have to look at these guys and say, hey, I, I need you to do this. And I can't ask them to do it if I don't know we don't have that training equipment.
Well, I'm not gonna ask you to go out there and do this if you're not properly suited up either. I mean, I've lost people in law enforcement, so I mean, our people's precious to us too.
Hey, I'm way behind you, about twenty-eight years of this, when I went to the academy, they pretty much told you, hey, you're a law enforcement officer, cowboy up and go get the bad guy.
That's how it was.
Uh, but the emphasis on safety and how to resolve things and, and other matters using tactical teams is become, has become, and is becoming more commonplace, and it's for a reason.
And I have trust in, in, in you taking care of this equipment, and, because it, it's, it's just like your car, I used to tell my guys that you take care of your unit because that pony right there is what's gonna get you there and back. So, and I know that, and I tell the fire department that too, we take care of our equipment because it belongs to the tact players. And so, but we're providing service for them, so I know it's gonna cost Justin, but I don't have an issue with you wearing the vest, or anybody else.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Justin, what are we gonna get this money from?
Sir, I was, I was hoping that, that y'all would know that, I would, I'm telling you the problem.
So, my initial thoughts are, we could, there, there's several different places
There is, yeah.
that we could get it out of, I think, uh, obviously, Public's lost is one, Grant's been another. Um, and then, obviously, if there's anything that, um, needs to be, we could take it out of a general fund, if anything, so.
And sir, there's a, I think that we actually deferred, said a week ago, with two patrol cars this year instead of five. So if that needs to be a place to find some of that money, sir, I think that'd be a great place.
And that's about a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, I think, uh, I think the budget for that is three hundred, so that would cut some of that out, so.
And that's good, that's good.
Well, I would agree with Commissioner Searcy here that we know we live in different times, we've seen that, you know, since we've been in office, we've seen that here. And, uh, safety is, is key, and I can't ask you to give me safety if you don't have what it takes to keep you safe. So, um, how, how quick is this stuff gonna be here, do you think?
So, it'll come in waves, some will be faster, some will be slower. We're hoping that our armor would be two to three months out, and they were actually going to manufacture the armor. Uh, they have, they have some different places that they do that, they're gonna do it in-house in Jacksonville, Florida, so they can get it to us quicker and it'll be closer.
That mean we get a road trip, right?
I think they're gonna shift it, but, I mean, we can make a Florida trip.
Oh, ain't no road trip.
Uh, the night vision may be three to four months out, so the night vision that we've priced, we can get a demo, and we're demoing it. So the, basically, the night vision we priced is, if you join a high-speed entry battalion today, that's the night vision that you would receive in the army or the Marine Corps. Um, they make an in-house version, same specs, and it can run two to three thousand dollars less. So, we're demoing it, it seems to be just as good, so that would save us off of that giveaway. But there's no promise on that, we're demoing it and make sure that it, it truly holds up to the, to the specs and standards that it should.
So I think maybe in this, we can have everything within six months.
I would, I would hope by a gene that my guys would be so tired. I would, I would hope by a gene that my guys would be so tired of having to train with their new gear that they go home and have to take a long nap after supper. Because that's what we plan on, uh, training program that complements every item that's purchased here at that.
Gentlemen, any discussion on that?
No.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of this equipment in amount of three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars through multiple sources. We'll call it that, Public Safety General Fund, possible grants, things like that. I'll make that motion, I'll ask for a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Y'all have been so gracious about item number two. And I'm gonna blame some of this on Patrick, okay? You tell me when to speak, sir.
I'm ready for you.
Okay, so, highly related to all the spiel I just gave you about everything that's been going on, uh, about us growing and, and using tactical teams. I need a way to get my team there. I need a way, I need a way to, to get them out of there if something bad happens. I need a place to put my equipment and consolidate it. I need a place where my negotiators can speak from, because I'll, I'll tell you this, if you have a tactical call and you need to negotiate with someone, they don't have a phone, or their phone is dead, or you just don't have cell service where you're at. So what I'm finding is a lot of times our negotiators, which have talked some really bad suspects out and made our job boring, which is what we love. Our negotiators are great, they have a great history. Uh, but they're talking a lot from behind patrol cars or the biggest tree in the yard or just around the corner at an apartment complex, just outside of where we think the bad guy's at. So what I wanna talk to you about is a Lenco Bearcat. Lack of better words, unarmed truck, alright? We would use it in tactical situations to get to and from a situation. We would use it as a platform for our negotiators. The Bearcats that we're asking for, you can also transport patients in it. It has a looter in it and it's ready for, I told you, we had the great medics on our team. So we would use it for tactical purposes.
Only?
No, sir, not, not only. Uh, we also, that's why I said Patrick had a little bit of a hand in this also. The EMA says they could use such truck also. And for implicit weather and weather of mass destruction, is that the words I'm looking for, Patrick?
That's it.
Um, such as high war, when you have a, when you have a, a big truck that's heavy, uh, with forty inches of, of, of water, it can take up to forty inches of water. Now we have something that we can run during, during floods and during natural disasters. Good Lord forbid, if we ever did have an active shooter or a mass casualty event where someone was shooting or had explosives, um, a thing will transport up to twelve people at a time, including the driver and the, and the commander.
I thought it was fourteen.
I believe it's twelve.
Okay.
And my guys are back there correcting me because they told me twelve. Twelve with the driver? Yep, twelve people. Now, that's twelve people, I comfortably see it. It's not like the cattle cars in the army where you just put people really close because it's an emergency and get out of here. So, yeah, you could get more in times of emergency than that.
Yeah, that's light belts, Justin. It's like seat belts, twelve seat belts.
Yeah, twelve, twelve seat belted persons.
Okay.
And then I hear you're right, you can keep your equipment, like the equipment that we're looking for, you can keep that in there, some of it, and store it in this truck.
Yes, sir, so some of the equipment would be there, yes, sir. And actually, uh, we're trying to, big bar and steel and EMS is gonna give us an ambulance, and we're gonna put some green and black on it and use it as, as an equipment station also. But some of it will be inside, uh, inside that, uh, inside that Bearcat. We have an armored truck, if any of y'all have ever been to, to the county barn. It was given to us on the ten thirty-three program. The windows are so faded on it that you can't drive it. They got to where we had a patrol car in front, a patrol car behind, and, and, and here we go, we're gonna try to take it on a mission. Those particular, uh, peacekeepers were designed for the United States Air Force. They were designed for airfields. Airfields are flat. So the last time that we took it out, we superheated that sucker up on the mountain with our close to your house, Karen. Um, it, it's just not, you can't see out of it. If you could see out of the windows, it would take fifteen to twenty-five thousand dollars to fix those windows, and you're still running a chance, you have to give it back to the government at any time.
Can you give it back now?
We're trying to give it back, the federal shutdown, as I was calling that. But as soon as the ten thirty-three program director makes it to Blue Ridge, we're getting rid of it, sir.
Good, good.
And like to remind you, this is, this is a big truck, and this is not like a three years and it's gone. This is something absolutely, it should be a ten to fifteen-plus year tool resource for the county, for all the public's sake, not only the sheriff's office, but for EMA and, and EMS. So they're pricey, okay? Uh, they most certainly are, uh, but they, they are not short-term investments.
They take trade-ins?
So as far as trade-ins, funny you said that. So, we looked at some trade-ins and they're as expensive as the new ones. It's because there's an eighteen-month backlog from the day you order those to the day that you, to the day that you pick them up. There's an eighteen-month backlog. So if someone actually wanted to get rid of one, they're selling for a premium price because they are available. The price on those Lenco Bearcats, they're made right here in the USA, and that helps. Um, so before January first, twenty twenty-six, any, the, the particular one that we're looking at, and, and Patrick, you have a grant in for a Lenco Bearcat. It ain't no promise yet, and we're gonna keep looking for more grants for every bit of this, and especially this, this Bearcat. Uh, we're gonna continue with it. If it had a PO before January one, twenty twenty-six, uh, we would save fifty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. Uh, the price to us with, with complete package, it shows up and we put a radio in, that's all Patrick would have to do is put his radio in. Uh, operation already, when it gets here, that's three hundred seventy-six thousand three hundred and ninety-three dollars. Three seven six, three nine three.
Would you save fifty-one thousand?
Uh, fifty-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-four dollars, yes, sir. Uh, so the price of steel is going up, so it'll be a six percent, uh, charge on January one, and then this particular model has a fifteen thousand dollar discount associated with orders this year. If it were ordered after January one, uh, just to add to that original price, it would be four twenty-eight, one three seven, four hundred twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And I just wanna say, hey, this is a, a ten, fifteen-plus year commitment, once it gets here.
What was a little bit about the grant that you guys applied for?
So we'd applied for one grant opportunity, um, which is a counter drone grant, but we thought we could slide it in possibly. Um, we'll know something about it after the first of the year. But the purpose of that grant is to, uh, basically take out rogue drones. So we thought we could make that work, and, uh, we've submitted that and should know something within a couple months, probably.
One month.
For that one, it was four hundred and fifty thousand?
Four sixty-three.
Four sixty-three, four hundred and sixty-three thousand. So it would cover the entire amount of the vehicle.
And then some.
Yep, and there are also other grants that we're working on to help fund this as well.
My goodness. We have eighteen months, basically.
Correct.
If, if this approval work out, the deal only have eighteen months, come up with three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
That's correct, Karen.
Well, let me ask you, uh, if that's the case, we have a lot right up here. Uh, if we build a building right there, can we use the rest of that grant money to put that building up for this machine?
So it's actually specifically for the Bearcat. Um, every dime of it would have to be for the Bearcat.
What's it gonna be for the Bearcat?
Yes.
Maybe nobody going in there but the Bearcat.
The application's already put in, so I don't know if we'd be able to squeeze it in, but we could try to squeeze it on another grant for a building. Of course, next one we put in for, for home incursion or something like that.
Okay.
Commissioner Patrick? Any discussion on that?
It's a lot of money, but... I know we'd save some, I guess, before January one.
Well, it, it's out of that safety squash grant, uh, money, ain't it?
Well, we could use, again, the worst patient area.
I would do the same thing, anticipation of the grant coming in. If that falls through, then we could fund it through, uh, general fund or Public Safety squash.
So it kinda falls in the same category?
Same category, uh, than tactical.
Can you put a sticker on that thing that says paid for by your squash tax?
I would love to put that sticker on there, if that's what you want, Chief.
Just throw a small pay by for your squash, keep coming. Alright, I'm due.
Alright. Gentlemen, in saying I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a, uh, Lenco Bearcat?
Lenco, yes, sir.
Lenco Bearcat, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars. Um, well, obviously with the anticipation that we can use Public Safety's squash grants, uh, and then maybe general fund, I'll make that motion, ask for a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Gentlemen, thank you, and I have no more eyes.
Thank you.
We've got two weeks to get us PO.
Yeah.
Two weeks?
We're gonna have to get the PO. Alright.
Two weeks to get the PO.
Oh. Probably in the morning.
That's right.
Number six, we have a Public Works Director Zach Karak, who are to purchase another question. I do want to thank y'all, the deputies, the medics, y'all do a great job, and I want personally to thank y'all for what y'all do. I, I'm really, thank y'all. Okay, guys, it's me.
I don't know if we got anything. I'm sweating too.
Okay, guys, I've got a, uh, I got a request for some equipment here. Uh, you've got a, you've got a information there in front of you. So, and you, you know, we kind of try our best to remove some snow through the winter, and I hope we don't actually use this, but I do have a guy that's, uh, going out of the business and doing some, uh, snow removal, and he, he had a contact made, and he's got several pieces of equipment here, uh, snow plows, soft spreaders, and he's got three pallets of soft bag soft. And you can see on that first page, one of his plows is seven thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars, that's just for one plow. We are getting four of those, or four different ones, and he's asking, he's, he's set me, I, he talked to me back in the summer and we, we negotiated a little bit here for the last little bit, and he's come to the conclusion that he needs to get rid of that, so he's offered to make the ten thousand dollars for all of them.
So you're getting four of those snow plows?
I'm getting four snow plows, four spreaders, and two pallets of soft cover steel.
For ten thousand dollars?
Yes, sir. Just a couple of those plows that pushes over the ten thousand mark right there, one of those, those that they have there.
And you've looked at this equipment?
Oh, yeah, I've been there. I've got some of it knocked dirty, but I have some just like it in my shop, so, we're, yeah, that place is pretty good.
Those, those spreaders, they go with bagged trucks or?
Yep, they got pickups and, uh, three-quarter tons, uh, three-quarter ton trucks and the half-ton too. So that'll give us some quick places to get in and get out. Uh, a couple of those trucks, we, those blades, we'll have four blades put on some of the trucks, and we'll have those, uh, straight things up again.
Well, let's get our roads taken care of and bad weather on.
Yeah, yeah. That's, we'll have nine of the pickups with those on there, so.
That's good.
Yeah, it's good.
And we got five pickups with blades on them, so.
That's, that's good. Ten thousand.
Yes, sir.
Put a warm yellow.
Yellow, be there tomorrow.
Yeah. But that's, it's hard to beat that.
Yeah.
We got nine trucks now, but we do more or less a quick response.
Yes, yeah.
Gets some places.
Even bad weather though, you can let the people take them trucks, you know, all, you know, when they go home, and get them rugs, get them rugs.
Just, yeah, exactly. That's kind of what I've got for now. Basically, we know we've been the weather, you know, it comes.
Yeah.
Get it out, add squash.
Sir, yes, sir.
Add squash.
Yes.
Anybody any discussion on that?
I haven't had a chance.
Just put you on stickers on it.
Oh, yeah, I'll give them.
Paid for by your squash tax. Alright, I'll get it.
Motion to purchase this equipment in amount of ten thousand dollars, and I'll ask for a second?
I'll say.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Thank y'all. Okay, got one more before I sit down. And with that being said, with the pickups, I've got one pickup out there, it's a four-door, four-wheel-drive, uh, Ford pickup. It's got, uh, right at two hundred thousand miles on it, it's a twenty-sixteen, and that thing's giving a lot of issues. It's, it's kind of been one of those deals that just keeps coming up, and, uh, I'm, I'm ready to get rid of it. Uh, I found, I had found another truck to replace it with, and it's a twenty-three F-154 wheel-drive four-door. It had, it's a used truck with twenty-one thousand miles on it, I think it's, maybe twenty, twenty-seven thousand miles on it. So, uh, they're offered me for forty-two, nine seventy-one. Can't say Ronnie Thompson forty, check.
Twenty-one thousand miles? You said twenty-one thousand miles, I was kind of...
Twenty-one thousand miles, yep.
Does it get any, any kind of warranty at all, limited now?
No. It might have a little bit of the drive drain or something, but it has pretty much.
But you're gonna use the squash?
Yes, sir, the squash don't get.
Jack, you getting rid of them old trucks and stuff?
Ooh, I got rid of all of them, yeah. We're getting one down there.
Okay.
Any discussion on that?
No, sir.
I have none.
That's how I make a motion to purchase this truck, Ronnie Thompson Ford, amount of forty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars, and ask for a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Alright, thank y'all.
That should put you pretty good. Now, shouldn't it? Is that, that should?
Here, hold on. That put me, that put me everything under the hundred fifty thousand miles or something. Yeah. So we have to, you know, these trucks are getting a lot of miles on them, just like those, really, and, and before I came on, that was the only two new trucks they had, and they used those things big time. So, just sort of like the ambulance, you gotta start watching for mileage and stuff creeping up on you, you gotta start replacing, or you're gonna start running up a, a bill with repairs and stuff, so I'm trying to eliminate that.
It, um, and just from the outside of an end, it does seem like these guys take, very good care of these trucks, but they, they do. Took a little pride in them.
The coach there told me today, we were, I had all my trucks out there together, and he looked at them, he said, they all look good? I told him, I explained to him, uh, we want it to look good.
They do.
That we, we wanna get that. When I first came on, a lot of times I, I worried about getting them to the job, maybe getting them back home, so now it's kind of take that worry away.
Thinking about that green truck, the door's really looking on, I can't get that out of my, I, I hear, I, I'm...
That trac is...
Exactly.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you, sir. Alright, so number seven, um, you know, if y'all remember, um, I think it was October meeting that we had, um, we had worked out a deal for, uh, some service with, uh, Dr. Mitchell, and we worked out a, find a place to make this happen for us, you know, agreed to do our, uh, all of our space and meters for, well, for free.
Right.
And, um, we found a place to, yes, and this is down at, uh, where Bandi Transport is. So we finally, we talked about leasing that little trailer, and, and we, we got it. So this is for that lease that we discussed in that, uh, October twenty-eighth meeting. And, uh, so I just need to, uh, to get approval to enter this lease. And what it is, uh, it's a six-month lease, because we know we're gonna start building this, um, animal patrol facility, um, probably in the spring, start doing that. It's a six-month lease, and we'll do month to month after that as needed, so it's not a long-term lease.
Is that, is that the little parts trailers you go in, Bandi's right there, do you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so it, it's kind of, it's close to the facility now, and, uh... Um, so it, it's kind of, it's close to the facility now, and, uh, I mean, it's just a hoppin' skipper.
Yeah.
Go up there and bring it back, so, um, that's just a matter of entering into that lease, um, for, for that kind of timeframe, so.
Tell me exactly where, where it is, so that I don't know, because I, I'm not familiar with Bandi, but some of these other people are not either.
So you know we're out of patrol there right here, on the ride, you go across the railroad tracks.
Okay.
And there's a trucking company right there on the ride.
Oh, is that Bandi's?
That's, that's where that's at, so it's that first trailer, trailer up there on the way.
Okay. Good spot.
Yep.
So, um, any discussion on that?
No.
All right, I'll ask for a motion to enter into that lease with Ameri Enterprises Incorporated.
I'm like that motion.
I'll ask for a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Uh, all right.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
And brings us down to number eight, which is our December twenty-third, our regular scheduled board meeting. And it's been, uh, um, tradition in the past, that, you know, since that one is so close to Christmas, that we do, uh, cancel that meeting. And, uh, obviously that's Christmas Eve, even I know I'll probably have to be done some Christmas shopping that night, or I will be probably trying to, uh, space in that trailer we just signed the lease for, so. That being said, I'm making a motion to, uh, to cancel that last meeting of the year, and I'll ask for a second if there's no discussion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Thank y'all. That brings us to public commentary, if anybody would like to say anything, raise your hand, come on up here and tell us who you are and what's on your mind.
Just don't ask you to know my name.
Why don't we just have a potluck here on the twenty-third, y'all commission this meeting, we'll bring the food.
Ain't we good? Ain't a bother. Anybody got anything? All right, well, both public commentary.
I got, I'd just like to say one real quick thing if I could from right here, um, you know, what, what y'all did tonight for, uh, public safety in Fannin County, I know it was a, it was a hard step to take because of the figures, um, but, but nobody can argue with your commitment to public safety after, uh, y'all listened to what Justin said, um, I mean, he could've said a whole lot more, um, but, you know, it's, it's very refreshing, I'll say, to, um, to see y'all operating the way you're operating and, uh, the way y'all are managing the funds that are coming in, I, I've heard more than one of y'all say tonight, how blessed we are here in Fannin County, and I agree, we are, we've not always been that way. Um, but the way y'all, to me, are going about managing the finances of the county, and, you know, it's clear where your priorities are, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you. Well, that being said, before we, uh, ask for executive session, um, who do wanna wish everybody Merry Christmas?
Yes, sir.
Let's not forget what this season's all about. And typically, our presents and everything, but we, we did get one present years ago, that we're very thankful for, and that's why we're here today.
That's right.
So let's, let's don't forget that, all right? So, do you have any other question? Executive session?
Why do you always look at me, I mean, he's never let me go in anyways. No, I, I'm fine, man, I don't have nothing to say, Merry Christmas, sir.
Merry Christmas, happy new year.
All right, and so I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.